Good afternoon. My name is Commissioner Scott Metzger. COVID-19 cases have been on the rise sharply in the last 30 days. We have seen increased hospitalizations, individuals placed on ventilators, and deaths. First, I want to take time and thank the heroes that are on the front lines in this war against the invisible enemy. Every day, these healthcare workers are putting their lives on the line to fight and save lives. We cannot begin to thank them enough. As county leaders, we feel it's our responsibility to protect our employees and the public while they're in our county-owned facilities. We've accomplished that over the past eight months with several measures from the establishment of a COVID planning and coordination team, 18 different directives to county employees, two previous press conferences to update the public, the use of face mask requirements, protective barriers for our employees and the public, and the regularly cleaning of buildings and vehicles. Today, we will announce some tighter restrictions. It's vital that we do not become complacent. It's easy to become COVID fatigue. We do not have control over this virus, but we do have control over how we can fight it. We need everyone, I repeat, everyone, to cooperate with those measures. We cannot go backwards and close down our businesses and schools. We witnessed firsthand the devastation this caused: unemployment, substance abuse, other abuses, suicide, and poverty. They say it will take a decade to recover from those measures. Closing a second time will cause a depression in more than a generation to recover. We cannot go down this road. So we stand here today to provide information from our local health experts and county officials to help better educate the public. We're requesting the cooperation from everyone. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Commissioner Rick Mirabito.
Good afternoon. You know, as we end 2020, COVID cases are four times higher than they were in the spring. And now all of us know personally, people who are testing positive, people who have been hospitalized, and sadly, people who are dying. I'm of the view that the best defense we have at this time is a strong offense. And what I mean by that is to use some of our federal COVID-19 money to literally hunt down the virus, isolate it, and prevent it from infecting more human hosts. You know, one important way to do this, to find the virus, is to engage in asymptomatic testing. And basically asymptomatic individuals, we know, are those who are positive and show no symptoms but are capable of spreading the virus. And we all know it's very difficult to get a COVID test if you have no symptoms. Constituents have called me, and I'm sure they've called some of the other commissioners, and asked, you know, how can you go about getting a test if you don't have symptoms? They've said to me that they'd like the county to step up to provide an opportunity for constituents who believe they've been exposed to the virus but who are not showing symptoms to receive a COVID-19 test. The good news is that with the $10.2 million we receive from the federal government, we have financial resources left to provide this life-saving service. And we now know that an individual can spread the virus for up to two days before they show symptoms. And many people are not showing symptoms at all and can spread the virus for a full 10 days. Other countries and places in the United States are performing asymptomatic testing. And one example, close to home, is Lock Haven University, where the President Robert Pinochet has been and remains an advocate for asymptomatic testing. Professor Beth McMahon, who leads the L H U Institutional COVID-19 Response Team, has gathered research data through the fall semester concerning asymptomatic testing on the L H U campus. Now, we know from other studies that up to 80% of the people carrying COVID-19 may be asymptomatic. And this was one of the findings that's come out of the nursing homes, where they found many, many staff and patients who were asymptomatic. So at L H U, upon arrival, they provided an opportunity for students to be tested voluntarily. In addition, every two weeks, L H U randomly samples 10% of the population, which is faculty, staff, and students, and test these individuals who are asymptomatic, who are not showing symptoms. In the past, test results took 48 hours, but new tests deliver results in literally 10 minutes. And during this time, students are asked to remain in their dorms. If a student tested positive, L H U moved to isolate the student for 10 days into private housing. Then, and this is very important, L H U initiated contact tracing for anyone who was considered a close contact of the case, meaning that they were within six feet for 15 or more minutes. The results of this aggressive action are really educational for all of us. L H U tested 2,320 students, staff, and faculty, and they found that 115 were positive, with the majority of them being asymptomatic, meaning they had no symptoms, but they were positive and capable of spreading the virus. This is what's amazing: of the 115 cases that were reported positive, they had over 1,000 close contacts who would have had the opportunity to potentially spread the virus, but through contact tracing, were asked instead to quarantine for 14 days. By the way, the CDC has now reduced that time to 10 days. So I really believe our community will be safer if we engage in asymptomatic testing to identify COVID-19 cases before people are able to spread the virus. We know that most people spread it without even knowing that they're positive. And basically, at L H U, by alerting those 1,000 contacts who may have been exposed, the institution protected the students, the staff population, as well as the families and the general community. Now, you know, at the time they were doing it, it was $120 for a test. But the antigen test has now come down to $20. You can get it at $20 a test if you're buying over 1,000. Some critics will say the sensitivity of the antigen test may result in 10% false negatives. No test is perfect. And frankly, we're not going to find a silver bullet. But because we know that up to 80% of those who are positive may be asymptomatic, we'll accomplish a huge victory if we start to put into effect asymptomatic testing and contact tracing. By the way, contact tracing also produces jobs, quite frankly. And I don't mean that in an off-the-cuff way. What I mean is that we have people who need work. More importantly, asymptomatic testing and contact tracing is a way for us to use the federal dollars to really try and cut off the virus from continuing to spread, as Chairman Metzger mentioned, that it is just ballooning. So I hope that we can educate ourselves about this and that we can look forward to having further discussions about this and seeing if we can't take the example that's so close to home as weather examples all over, all over the state and all over the country that are doing this. And from that, I would like to introduce Commissioner Tony Masser, a longtime commissioner serving us.
I'd like to thank UPMC Dr. LaPatafsky and Steve Johnson for being community partners with the Lehigh County Board of Commissioners as we navigate through these difficult times. I'd like the public to put forth the effort to comply with our officials' recommendations. On our behalf of the Board of Commissioners, we wish you all safe and a happy holiday season. It is my pleasure to introduce to you from UPMC, Dr. LaPatafsky. And he was my family doctor.
Thank you very much, Tony. Across the UPMC system, we are currently treating 1,050 inpatients who are COVID-positive. Here in our community in north-central Pennsylvania, at our hospitals, including UPMC Williamsport, UPMC Lock Haven, UPMC Muncie, UPMC Wellsboro, and UPMC Cole in Cattersport, we are treating 109 inpatients in our facilities. Well, we've seen an increase in this region that was not experienced during the spring increase in the pandemic. Our extensive planning and preparation have ensured that UPMC facilities are safe and well-equipped and we could properly care for COVID-19 patients in the most state-of-the-art ways possible. There's a lot of information available to the public, and it's important that we understand that the data is a snapshot in time in a very fluid environment. At UPMC facilities, our census continually fluctuates as the patients are admitted and discharged around the clock, 24/7 through 65. Some UPMC hospitals are nearing capacity of their intensive care units. We have been fortunate in our system in that we have the ability to create new intensive care capabilities within our facility here at Williamsport. And we have the ability to shift patients who are not as ill to other UPMC hospitals within our network of UPMC suscohanic facilities. In addition, we could shift other resources, including staff, between hospitals to best flux our staff and our bed capability to meet the needs of our current situation. UPMC Williamsport and other hospitals in the region are providing all services that we are capable of, and our emergency departments are open, and we are prepared to care for patients at all of our facilities. Our staff continues to work tirelessly, and at this time, I think we need to be cognizant and understand that all healthcare workers deserve our recognition for their outstanding efforts, their exceptional commitment, and all the work that they've done for us throughout this pandemic. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank them for being on the frontline heroes of healthcare and helping our communities continue to have access to quality care during these very challenging times. We've been through a lot this year. In the upcoming holiday season, and as we've talked about earlier, the idea of COVID fatigue is starting to set in, but we can't let our guard down. COVID is real, and it's a very real concern and very dangerous. My ask of all of you and for our community is that we continue diligence when it comes to preventative measures. These include masking, social distancing, hand washing, and avoiding gatherings outside of our immediate households. These types of measures have been shown to be effective, and they will work and do work. Please continue to follow the guidance that we obtained from the Department of Health and the CDC as they remain the best tools in helping us continue to decrease the spread of this virus within our communities. Thank you very much. I would be followed by Jeff Hutchison from the Department of Public Safety.
Good afternoon. Commissioner Metzger touched on thanking our healthcare workers. I would take that one step further and thank our first responders. You know, certainly don't take anything away from our healthcare professionals in the hospital, but especially at the Department of Public Safety. You know, we have direct interaction with our EMS, police, and fire agencies, and they are also on the front lines of, you know, this pandemic. So I'd like to also extend a thank you for everything they do, day and night, 24 hours a day, most times making first contact with a lot of these patients. At this time, I'm just going to give a brief update on today's numbers, for those that haven't seen. Over yesterday, here in Lehigh County, we're seeing an increase of 195 cases, bringing our total up to 2,510. We have an increase of negatives of 226, with a total of 19,524. And the statewide total is up to 386,837 positives. Dr. LaPatafsky talked about the UPMC system, and we all know that reaches outside of the Lehigh County borders a little bit. But within our county, our county hospitals were showing 68 patients hospitalized, with 16 of them being in ICU and nine on ventilators. Now, that is data driven by the State Department of Health, so there may be a lag in that from real time, but that is, you know, was officially reported. The Lehigh County Coroner's Office is reporting that we've experienced 54 deaths from COVID-19 up to this point. And then, just as a small comparison, one month ago, on November 3rd, we were only at 1,022 cases. So in the last 30 days, we've had an increase of 1,488 cases. Every day, for the senior leadership in Lehigh County, I consume the data from multiple sources, and we put together a real brief packet of the most important numbers, and then that is briefed out across the county leadership and the COVID Ops Committee within the county, so they provide the real-time data to make real-time decisions. That's all I have at this point. I'd like to introduce Sheriff Mark Wusk.
Good afternoon, everybody. The the COVID-19 pandemic doesn't isolate itself to just those in our nursing homes. I have a relative in a nursing home who was COVID-19 and fortunately has recovered. But it affects all of us in many ways. It affects us as a county, as I speak to you from a county leadership level, because when we have an exposure that is an exposure that is identified by the CDC or the DOH guideline, the exposure amounts to lost work time with the quarantine period. And if there is a positive test, there's a certain amount of days where we lose productivity. We, as a county, can't afford to lose our staff for weeks at a time because of COVID. The county may not provide services that we provide to every resident of the county at one time, or give every resident the same services that we make available. But everybody in this county benefits by the services that the county provides in many ways. So the effort here is to make sure that we keep our employee group safe. And that is the reason that the COVID Committee, we've actually had, have had a COVID-19 committee since March. We have been meeting as a leadership team, about 15 of us, every single day, all the way through the summer. I think we went to Hutch One a week by September, maybe, which demonstrates how serious we take this COVID concern. We understand, and I understand from a law enforcement standpoint, that we have people at each end of the spectrum. We have individuals who could care less about COVID, could care less about masks, and we have those that are extremely fearful about any possibility of getting COVID. We, as a government, have a responsibility to be able to perform. That's the responsibility of government, and government can't stop, and we can't stop. So what you're hearing today, and what you'll hear from one of our partners, our leader from the Court Administration side, and District Court Administrator Adrian Stahl, who will speak after me, you'll hear some of the finer details of what the court has crafted with the support of the COVID-19 Committee and President Judge Butts and the commissioners. You're going to hear restrictions that everyone's not going to love. We don't love them at all. We haven't loved COVID at all. COVID has been very stressful for the public, it's been very stressful for employees. But we have to stay healthy. Dr. LaPatafsky touched right on that: we have to stay healthy. If we lose our government workers, and we lose our hospital workers, and we lose our healthcare workers and our EMS workers, we're in really big trouble. And we don't want to get to the point where we're in really big trouble. The sheriff's role in this: we monitor the security operation of the county government, and in specific, I'll refer to the courthouse. I am responsible to perform all lawful court orders that I receive, and will soon be getting the court order that will come from the President Judge. D.C. Stahl will talk about that shortly. And we will enforce that, and I'll give you some sense on how we'll do it. We're not enforcing it from a sense of, you know, handcuffs and arresting people. It's a common sense effort that I'm going to explain to you. But the restrictions were needed to make sure we stay safe and that the public stays safe. The operational importance and concerns that you might ask about, appointments are going to be needed. And I believe D.C. Stahl will touch base on these again. It's important that we maybe say it again, because it's going to be important to know. Appointments will be needed. Masks will be required, or face shield. Small children will not be obligated, we're not going to, you know, hold a one-year-old baby down and make a one-year-old baby put a mask on. Medical issues, if no mask, that was discussed at length. I can't wear one, I have restriction. If that's going to happen, we're going to ask you to go back to your vehicle. We'll give you a sheet to make the calls that you need to make, to make an arrangement with the particular office in the courthouse to discuss how you want to transact your business. But we're not going to make exceptions because I don't want to wear one, or I can't wear one, and I want to come into the courthouse. I can't speak to numbers, but Dr. LaPatafsky could certainly probably offer how many people are asymptomatic. You know, many of our staff, my staff, have been asymptomatic when we've had to send them home. Family members are not going to be, generally speaking, permitted to join their family member for a court proceeding. But the deputies down front will assist as much as possible. But make no mistake, we need to restrict access to the courthouse, and that's what this is all about. I would suggest anybody who is going to come to the courthouse and has not made direct contact with the court they're going to or the office they're going to in the courthouse, that they make that call before they come to visit us. Because otherwise, we're going to have to ask you to leave until we can be sure you're going to be safe. If we had a magic wand that we could see that you weren't sick or you didn't have COVID, that'd be one thing, but we don't have that capability. And we need to make sure that our staff stay safe, that the six hundred some county employees, we have to make sure the public stays safe. And we have to make sure that our courts continue to operate. We can't afford to not have jurors report for jury duty. We can't afford to not have trials. We can't afford, and D.C. Stahl, I hope, will touch base on this again, we can't afford to shut down our court system. We have to continue to take care of business because the backlog will only become greater. And all I can say is I ask everyone, whether we like it or not, the various restrictions, please do your best, and please conform to what we're asking. Thank you. And at this time, I'll introduce District Court Administrator Adrian Stahl.
Thank you, Sheriff. So, beginning on Monday, in-court proceedings and in-person access to proceedings will be limited in order to safeguard members of the public, court personnel, court users. To the extent possible, the Court of Common Pleas, Family Court, and the Magisterial District Courts will decide matters on the paper, or they will conduct proceedings via advanced communication technology, which typically is via Zoom or via telephone conference call. For in-person court proceedings, no one other than the parties, witnesses, and counsel will be permitted into the courthouse or into the Magisterial District Court offices. That, again, is effective on Monday. So the sheriff had alluded to no spouses, no significant others, no family members, no friends of a party or a witness will be permitted. Any member of the media desiring access to a particular court proceeding should contact the presiding judge's office, and the numbers will be listed in the administrative order. They should, the media should contact the presiding judge's office to arrange for participation via telephone or via advanced communication technology. So no one will be permitted entry into the courthouse or into a Magisterial District Court without a scheduled appointment or prior authorization, with the exception of licensed attorneys. And with the exception of individuals who are coming to the courthouse to pay costs and fines, to make a payment on child support at the Domestic Relations Office, or if they're here to post bail. Or if they're here to conduct business at Magisterial District Court Beakley's office, that's located within the courthouse. So his office will be open, again, similar to the courthouse, to accept payments. He'll also be open without an appointment to accept new filings or to respond to citations or any other court documents. I do want to also note that we're in the process, and they're likely to go out in the mail tomorrow, of sending out summons for jury selection, which is currently scheduled for January 11th through January 15th. And I realize it seems maybe counterintuitive to be asking jurors to come into the courthouse during a pandemic. But as the sheriff had noted, jury trials are very important. You know, not only is there a constitutional right to a jury trial, but it would really be a disservice to the county and to victims and their families if we were to not try to move these cases forward and not try to conduct jury selection and jury trials to the extent we're able to do that safely. So we will continue to monitor the local situation between now and jury selection, and we'll make a decision whether to move forward with that. But we're mailing out the summons, so we have every intention to try to conduct those jury selections and trials as safely as we're able to. As far as the other court offices, such as adult probation and juvenile probation, those offices will not be having individuals on supervision report to the courthouse or report to the juvenile probation office. They will supervise those individuals in the field or via advanced communication technology. And that actually has been going on since early on during the pandemic. As we all know, everything is subject to change, and anyone can visit the Lehigh County website, and there's a tab for courts and COVID-19 information. And we'll continually update that with information regarding jury selection and filing documents and all those good things. On a final note, even though the Magisterial District Court offices are open to accept new filings and to accept payments, we strongly encourage people to avoid going into those offices in person, if at all possible. So we strongly encourage people to file documents via U.S. mail and to make payments online. And again, that information for the online payments is also on the Lehigh County Court's website. Next up is the Prithonitary and Clerk of Courts, Tom Heek.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick comments from the Prithonitary's office. Our office routinely sees over 100 individuals from the public in a day, whether it's filing from the legal teams throughout the community, members of the public themselves filing for custody. I would personally like to thank the COVID Response Committee team and the judges and the courts for taking these measures. On Monday morning, to use an example, as I looked out from my office, they were shoulder to shoulder at our counter filing. One individual did not have a mask. So my concern is to make sure that my staff spends Christmas with their families. So I had a confrontation with that individual trying to file something across our counter. Response: "Don't need a mask. I'm done with your office anyways," and walked out. So COVID response, phone call, teleconference that afternoon, and explained our situation and felt that it was time for us to do something to protect us. Since March, the county has done an unbelievable job of making adjustments in each of the offices that deal with customer service. And we still need to protect ourselves. So operationally for us, we will be limiting just appointments only, encouraging mail-in and drop-offs at the front lobby in cooperation with the sheriff and his staff, and limiting individuals to appointments only at two of a time. Now, it's not my intent to shut down public access to records, which is entitled by law. So we do the best we can, and we certainly would extend extend it to the public, that we're going to do the best we can to meet everybody's needs with protecting and reducing the risk for us. So with that said, then I So with that said, then I would introduce Matt McDermott, Director of Administration.
I am going to read a statement on behalf of the Register and Recorder, Mr. Dave Hoffman, who unfortunately could not be with us this afternoon. His statement is, "We will continue to work hard to provide services while working within the operations framework. The flexibility and adaptability by all is greatly appreciated as we move forward together for our greater benefit in Lycoming County." You will see that a sign-up sheet to get on the list will be at the front of the counter starting at 9:00 a.m. this Friday for December. More details and fine tuning about everything will be posted on the Register and Recorder webpage early next week, as we work through any new procedures that still need to be determined, if there are any changes to be made. I intend to keep this as simple as possible. Feel free to contact me with any questions at (570) 327-2210. I'll be followed by Jeff Hutchins, our Director of Public Safety, for an update on our operations at other county facilities.
So we heard about our court operations and as well as our Magisterial Judges. I just want to touch base briefly on the other county operations. Lycoming County is remaining open for business. As we've heard, we strongly encourage the use of appointments, teleconference, mail, or using the drop-off bins in the lobby to limit person-to-person contact. Not a lot has changed for prison and pre-release. They remain without visitation for safety reasons. I can assure you, Warden Shoemaker is doing everything possible to keep the inmates and his staff safe, so there's no changes there. RMS and our transfer station remain open for business. As always, we just ask that masks be worn, and we limit contact. The Lysoc Complex, Department of Public Safety, Agriculture, once again, please just call ahead for appointments, and everyone will be taken care of. But just to reiterate, the county is staying open for business. Please just use appointments, limit contact, utilize the mail and phone calls, and we are here to help you. And then just remember, you know, any of the information I provided earlier is available at health.pA.gov. There is a COVID dashboard there, there's a COVID early warning dashboard, a lot of good information, trends, that you can go there and inform yourself on what's going on. So next, I'd like to introduce our County Treasurer, Cindy Newcomer.
Hi, I don't want to repeat a lot of what everyone else has said, but I just want to thank the community for working with us to be able to provide the services that we have. The 2021 dog licenses are now on sale. We did a mailing of over 4,000 applications, so we encourage you to mail those back into us. If you don't have a card, you can print those off of the www.lyco.org. And you can even fill out the application online and pay online, or if you feel more comfortable, you can submit that by mail with a check, and we'll return those licenses to you ASAP. Fishing licenses also on sale December 1st. You can go to the fish and boat website and print those off, so you don't have to comment and have communication with the county for those. The same with real estate. We're going to continue to accept those by mail. Just a reminder, they are due to the treasurer's office, postmarked no later than December 31st. You know, there's a lot of information, like Hutch said, on the website. Feel free to look there. If you still have additional questions, feel free to call my office. We would be glad to help direct you or answer any questions for you. With that, I'd like to hope everyone stays safe and have a happy holiday. And I'm going to turn it back over to Director McDermott and Sheriff Lusk.
So you're probably wondering why are the both of us up here? Well...
Because I'm the more handsome one, and you're the smaller.
Well, that's the debate. Anyway, yesterday afternoon, we had the opportunity to be a participant in a phone conference that was nationwide, and it was with DoD, FBI, U.S. Marshals. Had to deal with Operation Warp Speed and the overarching tenants from a national perspective on what we can expect at the state level. At this point in time, I'd say we're probably, I think we're comfortable with what's going to happen at the national level and how things are going to come our way. What we don't know right now is the state-level information down to the county level. Since we're one of those counties that doesn't have a health department, we're dependent upon DOH and direct reporting through our EMS and EMA chain.
The conference call invited all the sheriffs nationwide, about 3,010 sheriffs nationwide, as well as law enforcement nationwide. And the purpose of the law, as I understand it from Colonel McDermott, who was a career Army Colonel, the need for distribution with this vaccine is so critical that there has been the enlistment, if you will, of the help from the Department of Defense. The military moves all kinds of equipment and supplies, and they're on normal duties when they're protecting the country. And their partner attached to the Department of Defense has been recognized as the FBI, and they were also a lead in this phone call yesterday. I think the significance of this is that there is certainly a ramp-up in preparation of the vaccine. We are aware that the Department of Health will be the lead in Pennsylvania. They'll steer the ship. Any support that the law enforcement community can provide to the Department of Defense and/or the FBI, we will certainly be a partner. And I'll be speaking from a law enforcement standpoint to my partners in our law enforcement community, if there's anything that we can do to assist in a number of ways. Lycoming County has been, I won't be specific, but Lycoming County has been looked at as a potential site for distribution for the vaccine. At this time, the four companies you've heard, we were advised that Pfizer, and I think Moderna was the other company that have asked the FDA for the emergency authorization for distribution. And if that occurs, and I'm probably not saying anything that Dr. Lopatowsky is not aware of, and I would invite you, Dr. Lopatowsky, if you can add anything to this, certainly come up here. Our goal is to make sure that we are partners in this county, not just as a county government, for county government, but that we provide whatever resources we can provide to help move this vaccine and have this vaccine placed, so we can provide it to the critical providers and to the personnel who need it as fast as we can, so it's not sitting somewhere. And I think I'll let Dr. Lopatowsky maybe add something.
I agree with everything you said, really. It'll be an emergency authorization, and then there'll be different forms of what will be coming to the community. I think there'll be many announcements about that. The primary focus will be for two areas. It'll be people who are residents of skilled nursing facilities, nursing homes, and then healthcare workers. Those two populations, there's about 3 million people in the country in nursing homes and 21 million healthcare workers. So that'll be the primary focus in the CDC as this starts rolling out. Okay, thank you.
Doctor, if you'd stay up there, I'm sure that the public would be curious as to the numbers that our director reported today at the hospital. So there were, what, 67?
68.
68 COVID patients. How many beds are available for COVIDs? There were 16 people in the ICUs. How many more ICU units are available? And do you believe we're at a critical stage?
I don't think we're at a critical stage right now. Certainly, I think we're at a serious stage, and I think we are nearing capacity. But when we talk about ICU beds, it's not a finite number. So we're very fortunate here in that we built the new tower in 2012, and with that, we were able to add approximately 30 state-of-the-art ICU beds. At the same time, our previous ICU has been available to us, and fortunately, all the infrastructure and everything has been there. So we have our former intensive care unit, and we have our former critical care unit that have been taken offline but are available. So we've been able to flex as we need to into those two units, again, and be able to provide that state-of-the-art intensive care unit care. So we're not up against a wall with any of the current facilities or flexing into the facilities we've had at hand. But it is serious, and we continue to monitor it on a regular basis. Some of the things that have been clogging up our hospitals, and when we talk with our regional hospitals in our area as well, including our other hospitals to the north, and then to our south and to our east, they're telling us the same thing that we're finding, is that we have patients that we're trying to discharge back to a skilled nursing facility, a nursing home, that they can't get back out to those facilities. With the nursing homes being very cautious with their populations, with patients that have been infected, they're not anxious to bring people back in. So all of us here at UPMC and the hospital systems around us are experiencing the same thing. We have patients that have been ready for discharge, day after day, sometimes more than a week, that are waiting to be discharged, that are currently clogging up our hospitals. So we're looking to the state and other regulators that may be able to help us with that. You know, those people can get back out of the acute care facilities, that would provide us with even more capacity to care for people that are quickly sick. It's just part of this whole COVID thing that we're all experiencing.
I just wanted to mention one other point. The coordination that we're doing on the COVID-19 committee from the county level, this initial call, Colonel McDermott was, joined the call with myself and with Kelly Robinson, who was our EMA manager under our DPS director, our DPS department, and our Director Hutchins. So we're on the cutting edge of trying to learn as much as we can about what we can do, so we can be ready to roll when this vaccine becomes available, so Pennsylvania and central Pennsylvania can get its share of vaccine and distribute it through our healthcare system. UPMC, it's wonderful to have them here, to be able to distribute as fast as we can.
This concludes the actual informational portion of today's press conference. We'd be happy to address any questions that you may have.
So can you just briefly go over how the county's going to operate with regard to what is open, what is not? My understanding is the courthouse is open, but with very few exceptions, you have to have an appointment to go to the different departments. Is that right?
Sure. I think the best way to take or look at all county operations is that we are open. You know, masks are required for entry into all facilities, and appointments are being utilized, and that is the only way of entry into the courthouse at this time. Obviously, there'll be a few exceptions, and they're in the order. Generally, the rest of the county facilities are operating along the same lines, but what we don't want to do is dictate each respective office's operations because they are so linked.
Are your staff working mostly remote at this point?
No. The majority of our staff are in the office in their respective departments. That's not to say that we don't have a few staff that are working from home, because some are quarantined, some are actually positive, and then some are high-risk, and there were potential exposure issues in the immediate area of their offices.
I address the, since the pandemic started in March, as of last Friday, we had 12 employees out of the 550 that had tested positive for COVID directly. I believe that number's starting to go up a little bit more. We had a couple people come in Monday, they're in the process of being tested, but as of last Friday, we were at 12 overall for the eight-month period.
Can you repeat, you said 12 out of how many?
I believe it's 553 employees. Is that correct?
Thank you.
Matt? Somewhere in the 550.
Close enough, it's right there. I realize, obviously, everyone's personal health is a very sensitive subject. When President Trump tested positive, it was made known to the public. When his wife tested positive, it was made known to the public. I would ask to any of the elected officials in the room, if you or a family member was tested positive, would you feel an obligation to your constituents to relay to them the personal experience then that you had with this pandemic?
I can answer that firsthand.
Commissioner, if you want to come up to the mic, please. Thank you.
For the record, I'll have no problem announcing it. I'll tell you all about my experience.
I think that is a very fair question. And yes, I contracted COVID, and I am a public official, and I announced it to my colleagues, not only because I felt it was an obligation, but I'm also with people. So yeah, I think it's an obligation that we should do so. I also want you to understand the severity of it. Now, the majority of the people are not going to show some symptoms or minor symptoms, but there are a handful, and more than a handful, that experience very severe conditions that are going to have a long-lasting effect after the COVID's out of their body. Okay? They will still be in a recovery process for up to a year. So this is a serious virus, and we have to take it seriously by protecting our own staff and the public as well. But as far as your question mark, yeah, I truly believe that as elected officials, we should disclose that information.
Can I throw in a follow-up? Because as it's, you know, kind of here in Lycoming County, we seem to avoid COVID for a long time, and now it's really hit here, and I have a good friend who just got it. And I asked him, "Do you have any idea how you got it?" And he said, "No, I have no idea." In looking back now, is there anything you would have done differently? I assume you don't know how you got it. Like, is there anything that you, if you could go back, would you do differently?
Not really. I mean, we hang out with the same people all the time, mostly family. So we kind of like traced it ourselves, you know? We felt that my son got it first, and my wife contracted it through him, and then I got it through her, because we got sick on, you know, different days. I guess, I'm not sure how many people are going to get it, and I know that people wear masks and still get it. Okay? But I'm not minimizing the importance of the mask. But I'm just saying that, you know, you let your guard down, like Dr. Lopatowsky said, and you're going to see an explosion, and that's what we're trying to prevent.
Let me hop in if I might. So one of the reasons I discuss the testing is because I think in a case like this, for example, we can't get tested, we don't have any symptoms. We work with Commissioner Missair. I think it's prudent for us to test everybody, quite frankly, in the county who has contact with people, the 12 people or so, as a preventative measure. Now, it was hard to do that at $120 a pop and the difficulty. Now, at $20 or $25, not only can we do it, but we can isolate the people, find out who isn't showing symptoms, and then take the necessary steps. And that's one of the reasons I discuss the asymptomatic testing. It's a way for us to proactively start, not only with our employees, but to work outward with other institutions and with other places, you know, so that we can start to circle around the virus. the virus.
How long would it take to enact a program like that?
You know, honestly, if we, if we got together with, for example, an institution like Lockhaven and asked for consulting services, they set it up, they, they know how to run it, they use physician assistant students who are required to get clinical experience doing the testing, administering the antigen test. They have the training from the CDC on how to hire contact tracers. I think frankly, we could implement it rather quickly and we could do it for not a lot of money. The problem is that people who may have been exposed, I can't go to UPMC, they are overwhelmed trying to take care of very, very sick people. So for me to go in there who has no symptoms and say, hey, I'd like to have a test, it's really not fair to the healthcare workers or to the sick people, you know, just because I think maybe I've been exposed. But if we do it proactively ourselves, it's, it's a way for us to circle the virus and, and eliminate the spread of it. You know, at $20, and, and we had, we have about $1.6 million that we have some flexibility with left from the COVID money. So, but we're not talking, I mean, I think we could do a program. Lockhaven spent $300,000 when it was $120 a test through the fall. That price has now come down to 20. So, you know, for $100,000, you could, I think we could do something aggressive. Start within our county employees and then try to move out on a community-wide basis. It's something we have to look at, we've got to discuss back and forth, but there's some logic to the questions you're asking about how do we do it? I don't think the commissioner knows, if I got it, I don't know where I would get it from. I couldn't tell you, that's the, you know, that's the, the problem of it.
And Mark, this isn't, this is a virus. It's not like a disease where you'll get tested and then you get tested for cancer, you're fine. This is a snapshot. So as you're getting a, a test, it's a snapshot at that moment. Later that day or that evening, you can acquire it. So that's the, that's the difficult part in testing. And that's why people go through, when we're just tested, like the healthcare workers, you're constantly tested every day because they can acquire it that night or that afternoon. So that's the difficult part of it. Not that it's a bad idea, it's a good idea. It's worked for Lockhaven. But we have to remember that's a snapshot at that moment. And at the same time, the same thing with the masks. The masks are wonderful, they help prevent it, but they're not a cure. And, and there's people that have acquired COVID with, they wear the mask all the time. So how people get this and how it happens, no one knows. It just hits people randomly, it hits people of all ages, no matter what time, the day or night. So we have to do these things to try to prevent it, but at the same time, we have to remember there's snapshots and there are tools. Yes?
Yeah, that's such a great question. And I can just say, from the 115 positives we had, about 100 had no idea where they got it until we traced them. Right? So then we traced it back and then we quarantined those that were at risk. Because if they didn't know where they got it, sure the hell doesn't, those contacts don't know that they were even at risk. So I agree that it does come unpredictably, but there is science behind this and there are preventive measures and masks will save lives, distancing and, you know, CDC's got some great, and Dr. Lopatovsky speaks to that too and deals with it every day. But I think there's, it's a moving science, it's not exact yet. I think the saying is we're building the plane as it's racing down the runway. So we're all doing the best we can do and we learn as we go. But I can tell you that you make a great point. Our students had no idea where they got it. We traced it back. We traced two students that had four house parties back to 64 people, 64 positives. So we identified them immediately that they were in contact, we brought them in, tested them asymptomatic, didn't have, we had, out of 130 people, we tested 29 positives. So that stopped it because you can imagine letting those 29 back out into, out of a nursing home, right? They have multiple contacts. You let one college kid go back to their college days, how many people do you see in one day? Especially if you're an athlete. You run with them, you play with them, if you're in Greek life, you're hanging with them, you're drinking, you're playing. So I, you know, I can't, there's no exact science, but there's some science.
That's where it's very, 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 very beneficial. Where you can do that tracing and where it goes back and then isolate those people, absolutely.
Yeah, you know, it's, it's like digging for diamonds, right? The diamond is finding the positive COVID case. So that, the whole, the whole, they tested X number and they found 115 positive, but then when they went and did the contact tracing, they were able to reach 1,000 people. And of those 1,000, many of them could have been positive and asymptomatic. I mean, it's true, what the, what the commissioner says, it's a snapshot in time, but if we keep testing enough. By the way, with statistics, there's a way to target populations so that when you do random testing, which is being done at State College, Penn State is doing it, University, some Pittsburgh and so forth.
You use terms like rising and ballooning, but if you look at the number, so our 15-day average positivity rate in like Comming County is 43%. The seven-day state average is 11%. Comming County is like, you said ballooning, it's rising. 43% is extremely alarming. Why do you think Comming County is suddenly off the charts, you know, as opposed to the rest of the state?
Doctor Hutch?
I can't, I can't speak to the number. I'm not familiar with the, that number or where that's from. But I can tell you that it's, it's person-to-person contact. So once you, I, I think kind of think of it as a reverse pyramid. You start with a few people and then it just keeps increasing and, and as Beth had pointed out, one person can infect many, many. So that's where that pyramid just begins to become a bigger and bigger number. But again, it brings us back to what makes a difference and it's the public health measures. So avoiding those house parties, wearing a mask, washing your hands, be careful what you're touching. You touch something, you wash your hands again and then distancing. So they're the things that make a difference. But it really is, it's that, I think of it as sort of cross-pollinization is, is more people are infected, it has a risk for even more people to become infected because, again, back to Beth's metaphor, how many people do we interact with a day? Or, or things that we may touch, a computer keyboard, a doorknob, a pencil, a phone, and then someone else touches it. So it's, it's those things that once, the trend begets the trend. If the trend is rising in something like this, that's the risk factor and that's why all of these things make a difference.
Doctor, do we have more specific knowledge as to how long COVID can last on a desk after it's dropped?
I think there's a lot of studies on that and there's a lot of different data and I don't think there's a definitive conclusion. I think a lot of these things will know more months from now than we do right now.
You know, Carrie, to answer your question also, I think to a certain extent, in rural communities, we kind of felt safe. We, we were isolated from the big cities where we were reading these horror stories. And so I think we kind of felt safe and like many social problems, you know, it takes longer to reach rural communities, but eventually it does, whether it's the opioid crisis or whether it's all sorts of crises. So, so one of the lessons maybe we can learn is, as a rural community, is that let's look to what's happening in more populated areas and realize that it will still reach us and take preventative steps to stop it. And it's never too late, even with this. It's not like, you know, we can now try to work, take actions as have been pointed out today to, to try to cut the spread. Yeah.
I just thought one thing that you said was the active positivity rate, right? So you're active for 10 days. So if you tested A positive, you have 10 days' active positivity rate. So that's a rolling rate. But if we're in a nursing home testing, that's a high-risk population, you have a higher active positivity rate. College campus, we do asymptomatic testing, maybe two out of 100 are positive, we lock them down. So the hospital, when we're doing symptomatic testing, we're going to see a much higher active positivity rate because we're identifying people already at high risk. It's like hospitals that take very sick people, don't maybe have as good of outcomes, right? Well, it's, makes sense. So depending on that active positivity rate, if you look at dashboards, you want to look for a rolling positivity and active positivity. If our active positivity is 43%, that means out of every 10, you got four positives. That's huge. Center of Disease Control says 5%. You're at 5%, you really need to pause because you're missing a lot too. Most people come in are symptomatic. So that's why asymptomatic is so key, you catch that before you're ready to do that.
Beth, you know, one of the numbers that's missing in this discussion is the number of tests that were administered.
Right.
And, and that could change the dynamics of, of the way we look at that 43% number.
That's exactly right. You have 10 sick people, you test 10, they're all sick, you've got 100% active positivity rate. It makes a big difference.
What's interesting about county employees is in some ways, we have a campus like LHU. We have sheriff's deputies who are interacting with lots and lots of people. We have APO officers who are out in the community interacting, then coming back into an area where they're meeting. Same thing with our juvenile probation officers. So, and then of course, Tom Heath described the situation, lots of people gathering. So that's one of the reasons why this testing may really help us isolate and put it under control because we have sort of a, a community that interacts with a lot of people on a daily basis that they don't necessarily think about until you start to sit down and count how many, especially when you're delivering PFA orders or, you know, you're out there in APO going house to house to house.
I think the main thing is, it's very, good news, I should say, is that the vaccine's right around the corner. You know, visor is going before the FDA on December the 10th. Moderna is going before the FDA on December the 17th. There's already game plans to get it out and preparations being made to, to get it out to communities. And I believe the government's wise to get it to the elderly and to the nursing homes first. 30% of the 272,000 people that have died have come from nursing homes. So that's a large, large percentage and those are the people that, that need to be protected and then it can be distributed down online. So I think that the plan's in effect is just getting their approval for those vaccinations because that's what's going to end this. That's the only thing that's going to end this, is the vaccinations.
On the vaccination line, this for UPMC, what is your capability for storage? Because I know the Pfizer vaccine is, needs to be stored at what, negative 70 Celsius? Do you have the capability to store a vast amount of that?
I think it'll depend on how it comes to us, what type of facilities. I think, my understanding is that dry ice will be sufficient and we already received many vaccines and other medications under dry ice, so that's not a, a huge hurdle for us at all.
And Mark? I think, I didn't write the numbers down, but when you were talking between March and November 1st, we had like 1,000 in some cases and since November 1st to today, we've more than doubled what we've had. So our numbers have, and, and we, we sent the CDC numbers to Dr. Caleb Alexander, who's a professor of epidemiology at Johns Hopkins. And his quote was, "These numbers are phenomenally high." How, or what message do you relay to the public? As, as I agree with, with Mr. Maribito that we felt it got here later and we felt insulated. Now that it's not insulated anymore and now that it is rampant here, what message do you give to the public to get their attention other than a repeat of, wear your mask, wash your hands?
Well, first off, I think just by the, the virtue of us having this press conference and trying to put out information, increase awareness of the, the extreme sensitive nature of where we are with the number of cases is indicative of our, our desire to share that knowledge with everybody. I mean, we haven't had a press conference in quite a while and so we felt it was important enough to try to get the word out, increase that public awareness. That's what we're trying to accomplish.
And Mark, if you would possibly suggest shutting down businesses and the economy, absolutely not. We cannot do that again. It has had unintended consequences beyond belief. And when we're talking about years, when I talk about Williamsport being revitalized, okay, it was just a short, maybe 10 years ago, this was a ghost town. No one came into Williamsport. And then, then people, developers, develop these businesses that bring in thousands of people over the weekend now. Okay? If you try to close them down again, this would be suicidal and a detriment to, to not only Comming County, but Williamsport as a whole. So to think that we can, we cannot.
Well, my, my question made no.
No, I, no, I understand, but.
It made no business or economic reference.
Right.
It was a question to the, the public who still believes it's a hoax and who, that's where it was directed.
Well, so Mark, this is what I would say to the public. If you don't need to travel or have people over for Christmas other than the small group that you live with, don't do it. I mean, there's, there's someone who said to me, you know what? They lost their father three months ago, the mother is alone in Florida and she's bringing her mother up. I get that because there's a person who's in potential crisis. But if you don't have a need, you know, don't bring families from other places here. It's better to just have a small Christmas. And people may disagree with me and you're, they're entitled to disagree with me, I'm just directing your question. If someone asked me, what can I do as Joe Smith citizen, that's what I would tell them. They can disagree with me and do what they want because it's a free country. But the truth is, if they do that, they're going to continue the risk of bringing the virus from New York, Pittsburgh, California, wherever it is, and bring it here. And that's just, just, just a fact. Statistically, some of them will have it and bring it and some won't. But that's what I would say to people. I would say to people, be very, very prudent. Don't argue with someone about wearing a mask. I mean, at the end of the day, the hospital workers, this is what I find very upsetting. Okay, I'm not going to wear a mask and I'm going to tell people I'm not wearing a mask. Meanwhile, when someone gets sick, hospital workers have to take care of that person and they risk bringing it back to their children and to their families. Because I'm too selfish to say that I'm, I'm, I'm not going to wear a mask? I mean, I said this once before, the generation of our parents who fought in World War II and who went through the depression, my own parents who were both deceased, my mother would be rolling in her grave and she'd say, "You kids, what we sacrificed for you and now you turn around and tell us you can't do this?" I, I'm not trying to sound dramatic, I'm just trying to say that we have to put the collective good ahead of what we perceive as our individual rights. We have our individual rights. The best way to protect our individual rights is to keep a strong collective good. Because at the end of the day, if the virus runs rampant, we won't have to officially close down. It will be closed down. The economy will be closed down. Right? You can't get sick people to come in and work if they're lying in a hospital bed at UPMC. You know, the big fear, of course, is that we may run out of healthcare workers. Right? So to answer your question, that, that's what I would say. And I don't think it's, I don't think anybody would disagree with me up here. You know, we just have to find a way to get people to put the collective ahead of the individual for a little while longer.
Mark, I, I'd just like to add to that is, everything we do is an individual, individual choice because we have freedoms. And no one likes to wear the mask, no one likes to be told what to do. But at the same time, if you have health issues, you have things that you know are going to harm your health, you stay away from areas that are high-risk. So we have to protect the vulnerable, we have to protect the elderly. And when I say to somebody, when they say, you know, you should wear the mask or you should wear the mask, I'll say, the alternative, yeah, it's, it's an individual choice, but the alternative's worse. Because if this continues to spread, if this helps prevent, it's not a cure, it's a tool. If it helps prevent, why not do it? Because the alternative's far, far worse. And the alternative is things get shut down. You won't be able to go to the stores, you won't be able to do this, you won't be able to do that because the governor's going to make the choice for us and we don't want that. That's what happened back in March, basically overnight. You know, people lost inventory because it was done overnight and those people can't recover a second time. I've sat with those people, I've talked to some of those people that actually cried in front of me and said, "It was supposed to be two weeks, it's been eight weeks." You know, "I can't do this anymore." You know, they were, one guy was, he, we, Tony saw him down there, he was ready to commit suicide. He spoke to the group down here at the barber shops. And we can't go back to that. So I would say to the people that it's a, you know, this is a hoax, I shouldn't wear this, this is our alternative. So, you know, while you're out in public, wear this. I don't agree with the wearing in your house by yourself. You know, you're in your house by yourself, but when you're out in public and you're around other people, you should wear it and you should wash your hands, you should stay social distance. You should take those precautions because the alternative's far worse. Yes?
Just to add to what you're just, such a great point, is that right now, I think we're seeing mainly family spread, right? There's a high increase in family spread. So I had a student say to me the other day, "I'm going to stay away." So I had a student say to me the other day, I'm going to stay away for Thanksgiving so there, there might be an empty seat this year, but next year, I don't want 30 to 1 because of COVID. So I think we can just encourage everyone in the community, just hang in there, self-discipline, just follow the science, follow the science, look at family spread right now. We just sent thousands of kids back to their, back to their hometowns. We tested them before they left the place. But like you said, that's a time in, they can stop, get gas and contract COVID off the gas tank, right? So follow the, this works, gloves work, sanitizer work. Family spread's huge. Sit yourself with your immediate family just for another two months. Vaccinations are on the way, but not the exact and absolute therapeutics and vaccinations are great, but public health is still going to be important. Masks are still going to be important. 30% of our population probably will not even get the vaccine, vaccine first time because they're afraid of it. So we're herd up to 70, if 70% of us get it and if it even works, right? So how long are those immunities? Three months or they like the flu shot, could they be eight months? We don't know. This is a, this is a science, we're all working together to put this puzzle together.
It's a team effort.
You tested every student before they left?
Every student who wanted to test, I got that, yep.
Yeah, that was a great idea.
That was a gift for them to take home to their grandmother, right?
Yeah, that's a great idea.
But like you said, they can stop and see a friend and not be disciplined, I'm going to stop, see my buddy just got in from Penn State and boom, it's over.
Absolutely.
Sorry, not very good. Sorry, sorry.
300 questions?
Okay, we want to thank everybody for attending and just please stay well and safe and have a good holiday season. Thank you.
It was nice to meet you.
Thanks.